Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Westfield Board of Education. It's Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023. We are in the Town Hall chambers. Alan, can we have roll call, please?
Good evening, everyone. Mrs. DeRoberts, Mrs. Drew, Mrs. Granato, present. Mr. Healy.
Here.
Mr. Lakhavoli.
Here.
Dr. Regan Lefevre. Mr. Riley.
Here.
Vice Chair, Mr. Cassio.
Hi, everyone. Hope your summer is going well. I'm here tonight. Thanks, Josh.
Chairman, Mr. Carey.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. If we could rise and have Ms. Stephanie McKenna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Emmett, do you have staff recognitions?
None this evening, Mr. Carey.
Thank you. Board members, board comment? Anyone wishing to make comment? Ms. Granato?
Okay, I'd just like to comment on the beginning of the school year, which is going to be next week. And I want to wish everybody, from, you know, the board people here, to administration, to teachers and students. You know, education has one of the best calendars you could have for ending something, putting an end to it, getting a little R and R, and then moving on to such excitement come September. I love that calendar. I loved getting time off in the summer, but I couldn't wait to come back. And that excitement is in the air already. So good luck to everyone who's on their way back to school, and especially for those little ones who can't even sleep the night before. So good luck.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Lakhavoli.
I would just like to say that it's nice to be back. It's nice to have such a big crowd for our first board meeting of the year. Usually, it's very sparse. I've enjoyed working with everyone up here. I continue, I look forward to continuing to working with everyone. I know the complexion of the board is going to change come November. I look forward to working with that board as well.
Thank you. Mr. Riley?
Good evening. Thank you. On Friday, September 19th, was the band kickoff, band camp. So I attended that, and there was a barbecue. So my wife and I provided 150 sliders. So that was, that was quite something. Also, Monday morning was the teacher orientation, so I got to meet approximately 30 new teachers. So that was, that was great. And I also wanted to mention that my, my wife returned from her 17-day adventure in Zambia. That was a, you know, a funded teacher trip. So she learned quite a bit and was feet away from animals, including rhinos and hippos, which are not very nice. But it was, it was a great trip for her.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Cassio.
Yes, I welcome everyone back on August 31st. So from now, from this point on till August 31st, get on your dancing shoes. It's going to start, the beginning of a new year. And I don't want to say it's going to be a bumpy ride, but it's going to be a great ride. And I wish everyone the best. I can't wait for the convocation. I'm looking forward to the event. And if you have any spots that you need a fill in, I'm available. So anyways, have a great week and enjoy. So keep up the good work, Weathersfield.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Regan Lefevre.
Thank you. Excuse my tardiness. As usual, I blame my kids. I want to say a special thanks to all the teachers, powers, and other staff who took part in the class program this summer. I think we had about 1,000 kids who participated in the summer enrichment opportunities, including my own. They loved it. They thought it was great. And I think it's a really important way to keep our kids connected to the schools and keep them learning over the summer. And it makes you wonder if we had the resources, the amazing things we could teach at the elementary level, including world languages, sign languages, wellness and meditation, and so on. So it was really, really something special. And I also wanted to send a message of solidarity to the parents like myself, who are experiencing the infamous week without camps. The end of August, as you are all gearing up, the parents are also getting very, very excited about the return to school. Thank you, and I can't wait for a great year.
Thank you, Ms... Anyone else? All right. I want to welcome everyone back. Very excited to start off the next school year. Remember to thank the unsung heroes, the custodial staff. Our schools are in great shape inside and out, and they've been working hard to make sure of that.
Did we get any minutes?
What's that?
Did we get minutes?
Yes, they were linked in.
Sorry.
No, no worries. Do we have a motion to approve the June 13th, 2023 board meeting?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All, any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the June 19th, 2023 Special Board of Education meeting?
So moved.
Second.
With a motion and a second? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Public comment? Anyone in the public wishing to make comment? Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and you have five minutes. Especially you, Mr. Lesser.
I won't take five minutes. You can bet on it. So Ken Lesser, 8 Hawthorne Way. I feel like I haven't left from last night, although I'm dressed a little more casually. But I'm here tonight to say thank you. To say thank you to all the board members, to Michael and all the administrators, all the teachers, for all the work they do. And so looking forward to next week when school starts. But wanted to let you know how much all your work is appreciated. I know it's not always easy. I sat up there two years ago at this time with many of you. So a big thank you to all of you and all of you, and good luck on the school year. Thank you.
Can I put that on my campaign card?
Anyone else wishing to make comment? Please step to the podium. Mr. Lesser, what is your address for the record?
8 Hawthorne Way.
Did he say?
Yeah.
I missed it. Sorry.
8 Hawthorne Way.
Hello. In the interest of time, I will get started. He's just passing out some...
No problem. You can wait until he's done if you want, and your time won't start until he's done. Don't worry.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening. We're the Gins. We live at 21 Adams Lane in Weathersfield, of course. We're here to actually formally request that our daughter Gianna be considered for early enrollment in kindergarten. Her birthday is February 4th, 2019. We have several reasons why, but mostly, you know, it's outlined in the packets here. But she has advanced academic abilities. She's successfully completed a pre-K4 curriculum, which her, the institution she went to actually moved her ahead because of her abilities, both academically and socially. And then we get into the, the state law and the Board of Ed decision, which we've looked into. And then the last piece is the avoiding potential under challenge. So we don't want her to get bored. Our concern is she's already getting a little bit bored in pre-K4, and her only recourse would be to repeat pre-K4 if we don't, if we're not able to enroll her early. That being said, we did go to the principal of Hanmer. He did return our call and told us we should go to the superintendent. We had contacted the superintendent the week of August 1st. I believe he was on vacation that week. And then my husband called, I called the following week three times. I did speak with Sally Distoli, but I also had asked the assistant to give a call back, and I had not heard back. So that was after three calls, we said, okay, we're going to try to come to the Board of Ed meeting. The state law and the, says that it's the Board of Education decision, and it can be reviewed at a Board of Ed meeting. So I don't know if you want to go ahead and give any additional detail?
Yeah, so as my wife was saying, that, you know, Gianna is both, you know, education-wise and socially, we're worried about whether she would suffer from, you know, lack of interest in school, with her friends actually moving on. So she's been, you know, as my wife said, she moved on. She was in pre-K4 at three and a half, so she's been at, you know, daycare since six months. We both work full-time, so she's been in daycare, and that's all she really knows. She had her friends since six months, and they're moving on. And we fear that, you know, coming in, repeating pre-K4 with a whole new set of kids and, you know, relearning the same curriculum, she could possibly be bored. But, you know, she thrives academically and, you know, does very well, you know, in various environments, you know? So she's around family quite often, and she socializes with plenty of kids at the park and through other activities we bring her to. So we're just really here just to advocate on her behalf, considering that her birthday is in February, and the law says, you know, January 1st. So she's really just a couple days, you know, really, you know, one month where it doesn't apply. So this, we're really here just trying to advocate on her behalf for this. So thank you for consideration.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to make comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Mr. Emmett, communications?
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to the 2023-2024 school year. The big news, which has been announced previously through Parents Square, I do want to remind everybody that the district will be offering free breakfast and free lunch for students attending the Weathersfield Public Schools for the 2023-2024 school year. This is made possible by the utilization of state-stable funds, as well as the utilization of the district's cafeteria fund. I'm certainly hopeful that legislation comes forward down the road that makes this universal in the future, but I am very pleased to say that for 23-24, we can ensure that our students, all of our students, will get a nutritious breakfast and lunch. I want to give you a couple updates with regard to the COVID protocols. It still is around. It's not something that has been a major detriment. As the year went on last year, we saw fewer and fewer cases. At this point in time, the State Department of Education and the Department of Public Health are no longer requiring us to report cases. With that being said, in consulting with the state, they still advise school districts to utilize the CDC guidelines regarding a five-day isolation following a positive COVID test. At this point in time, the state is not offering any additional free tests. I do understand through my consultation with Charles Brown at the Central Connecticut Health District, they do have test kits available in the event that you find your children are with symptoms. As was the case last year, if we see absences rising, then we will communicate that to each school community. We will continue to promote frequent hand washing, as that practice is a great deterrent, not only to COVID, but to the other illnesses that we face in our schools, such as the flu and the norovirus. Want to give the community an update on our facilities assessment. As you are aware, last year, the board took action to award a contract to Colliers International to update our facilities assessment. The facilities assessment was originally completed back in 2018. So the focus of this update is to provide updated priorities, needs in each of our elementary schools, along with an up-to-date projection from a budget perspective on how much repairs would be to our existing five schools. Colliers staff has been out both on the 8th and 9th of August to each of our elementary schools. I anticipate that we will have a deliverable, a hard copy report for presentation to the board on the 26th of September at the second board meeting in September. I will be polling board members for a facilities and maintenance committee meeting in the interim, so that we can go over not only the facilities assessment, I also want to give an update on what's going on within our buildings over the course of the summer. As board members have seen over the course of the summer, we've had a variety of capital improvement projects that have gone on. Currently, the town is upgrading and fixing sidewalks at multiple buildings. This includes Stillman Building, Hanmer, Emerson-Williams, Webb, and Silas Dean. In addition to that, we had at Webb Elementary School the rebuilding of a concrete staircase on the north side of the building. That is now complete. We have done a variety of other painting projects, and that is across all school district buildings. I'm wanting to give a shout out to our custodial staff, who have been instrumental in making that happen. I know High Crest, they painted the gym. Hammer's done a lot of painting upgrades as well, and the buildings are looking clean. In terms of buildings being ready to open, right now, the only space we're waiting for at Weathersfield High School is the pool. The pool was slated to go down for repairs. It is currently drained. It is empty. And we are working on plumbing infrastructure as we speak. So I'll have an update for you as soon as we get word from physical services as to when it will be filled and up and running. We had the new teacher orientation begin yesterday. I know that Mr. Riley attended. Thank you for being there. As he stated, we have approximately 30 new professionals joining our district. It was an event that is always one of those really exciting events, as we bring people in who are just coming out of the college ranks. We have some seasoned veterans coming in, and we have some of our Weathersfield High School graduates, who I can recall as students some years ago. So looking forward to having everybody back for the 31st of August. The idea for our new teachers is to give them the opportunity to get their feet wet with regard to technology, understanding our curriculum, understanding the nuts and bolts of, of the district, and certainly giving them time to be in their classrooms to get set up and waiting for our kids to come back on the 31st. As Mr. Cassio mentioned, next week will be convocation, so we have a variety of activities planned for Weathersfield High School on Tuesday morning at 8:00 a.m. Monday, we will welcome back all of our staff. We've got a combination teacher work day and professional development day, both on Monday, convocation on Tuesday morning. Staff will be back in their buildings Tuesday afternoon. And then on Wednesday, it's a flip-flop. It's teacher work day and professional development. So it is a very, very busy week next week. And I will tell you, I have lost count at the number of teachers that I have already seen in their classrooms over the past three weeks, getting ready for the start of the new school year. I am very pleased to report that the illustrative math materials for grades K through 6 have arrived. They are in schools. We had teachers that were chomping at the bit to get those materials in their hands so that they can start that work. Some of the professional development work that will go on next week will focus on that illustrative math as we roll that out. Also, very pleased to report that Weathersfield Public Schools received the second mental health grant. This was a huge undertaking. This mental health grant will provide us with additional therapy support for Silas Dean Middle School. This is coupled with the first grant that we received last February, where we were able to hire an additional social worker at Weathersfield High School to focus on our students with chronic absenteeism and students that are not engaged in the learning process. I am very pleased to report that with this additional mental health grant, we'll be able to provide these services at the middle school as well. So this is a two-year grant. It's actually through fiscal year '24 through '26. So this is something that has some sustainability to it. And I would also like to say, just to remind all of my friends watching tonight in grades pre-K through age 22, first day of school is Thursday, August 31st. I will tell you that today, I had the opportunity to be over at Silas Dean Middle School. You'll hear about our class program very shortly, but one of our final class programs is the transition to grade seven. So I had the opportunity to sit with 30 friends who are coming into Silas Dean Middle School as seventh graders. They are practicing opening their lockers, getting a feel for the building, and working with Mr. Solano, the science teacher, along with Mr. Voizin, the new assistant principal at Silas Dean. So we're very excited to have our kids come back, and we're very excited for the start of the new school year. So with that, it's communications this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. There's no action items, announcements and information. Board members, check your packet. We'll have board, board meetings scheduled. If, if you can attend, please let the chair of the committee know. Mr. Emmett, 2023 Extended School Year presentation.
Yes. If I could please have Ms. Freitas come forward?
So for facilities, they do a population study, I guess?
Yeah, we have to do it. Yeah.
We also? Okay. Good evening, board. Our chairperson, Carey. Good evening, Mr. Emmett, and all the board members. We are very grateful to have this opportunity to share with you tonight a little bit about our extended school year program over this past summer, 2023. Mrs. Granato, you're so true in saying, there's a certain breeze that comes through the air in late August that just reminds you that the beginning of school is quickly upon us. It's quite sentimental. But tonight, we're going to take the opportunity to take a step back and share with you what we did over this summer through our extended school year program, which is quite different from class. So we'll give you a glimpse at what this program looks like for our students through special services. I'd like to welcome Ally Paquita, our behavior analyst for the district. She is also our supervisor for the ESY program, and she was able to coordinate, organize, and really execute an outstanding program in support of our students. But I'd also like to share an extended thank you to all of our families that entrust us with their students' extended school year experience, year after year. The beginning of school is very exciting, but there's also something very sweet and sentimental of seeing all these little children, and I should say, our older children as well, come off the bus for extended school year. It's right in the middle of July. It's right in the middle of summer, and yet, we have so many students that attend, that are so pleased and so excited, and have their lunchboxes and have their backpacks, and really, really come engaged and ready to participate and learn throughout the summer. And we wanted to extend a thank you to our families that support that throughout the summer session. So we can get started. The extended school year program, otherwise known as ESY in EdSpeak, is not something that is for everybody. This is not the rule for special services. It's more often the exception. This extended provision is really for our students that are meeting certain criteria, whether that's regression, recruitment, or need services due to a severity of a disability. And this provision, that is, again, the exception, not the rule, is really provided through the recommendation of the, excuse me, of the PPT. And this recommendation is specific to each student individually. Although we have a program of special services, those services are unique to every single student and are really recommended through the PPT process. They recommend the duration. They recommend the frequency. And they also recommend the amount of time that the student will be attending these extended school year services. And so with all of those and all of the different individual recommendations, the team works together with Ally in efforts to create a program that will be able to support and service every, each and individual need of our students that are recommended. Because our purpose is to provide FAP, and not all students will require this service, but those who do are required, will attend, and therefore will be assured that we can provide them a free and appropriate program individual to their needs. As I mentioned, the decision-making process is made through the PPT. This is a team that meets at the school-based level. It includes an administrator, teachers, parents, often related service members, our speech and language pathologist, on occasion, Ally herself. And this team, in collaboration with parents and often our students, will meet to discuss if the child meets the criteria for extended school year services. Our extended school year services are decided based on three criteria. This criteria is regression, recruitment, or severity of disability. So we need to look individually at each child and decide as a team if this child's skills may regress over a period of time. And with that regression, recruitment would take much longer than we would anticipate. We all have summer slide. We all have maybe a little bit more summer slide if we haven't done our summer reading, but generally, our students will recover after a certain period of time, once back into the routine of school. And so the team needs to make that decision, if this child might require extended school year services, and efforts to assure that that period of time is not too long, and that our students are able to meet their goals and objectives within the prescribed period of the IEP. We also look at severity of disability. We have students that, regardless of regression or recruitment, still need to work toward their goals and objectives individually, given their disability and their needs on their IEP, and would require full year services and efforts to meet those goals and objectives. And again, those are all based individually on the student with the team, regardless of disability and regardless of the school that they attend. All right. So then what happens is, around January, when we all come back from the holiday break, is I make a spreadsheet and give it out to each of the schools, to the case managers, which are typically the special education teachers. And on that, they write down the students' names, where they see them going by the end of the year, and if they think possibly, when it comes to PPT time between now and the end of the year, they may need to come to our ESY program. And from there, I make an entire spreadsheet that talks about all the different services that they, that they are required, what their needs are. And then when we come to PPT with everybody on the team between January and the end of the school year, the team determines if they need to come or recommend them to come to ESY. At that time, what happens is, is we get all the names, we get the services that are needed, and we come up and develop kind of the system of how many teachers we need, how many classrooms we need, and then also help to break up the students based on the individual needs that they need and what makes sense to them within each classroom. So we end up having what it says is a multi-grade level classroom, and that is because some students, based on their needs and what they need, it functions better to have them in a group of kids that are kind of learning at the same level or working on the same goals. And these two pictures that we have here are what our rooms look like. These are two pictures from ESY this summer. So the students are getting one-to-one needs at times with a parent educator, behavior specialist, or the, or the teacher there. And at times, they're also doing group activity with a whole group's instruction. ESY is four days a week, three hours a day. Our preschool runs 8:30 to, sorry, 9:00 to 11:30, and K through 12 is 8:30 to 11:30. We're individualized learning opportunities based, again, on the IEP goals that have been selected by the special education teacher and the PPT team on what needs to be worked on over the summer. We have both small and small group and one-to-one sessions, and then we are ongoing progress monitoring. So throughout those four weeks, every day, we're working on the objective goals that are in the IEP, and we're taking data to confirm that they are making progress or keeping where they need to be over the summer. Related services also come in, so speech, OT, PT, the students that require social work, they all have their scheduled times to go and meet with their related service to make sure that they're still get that ongoing support during the summer. And then teachers supporting teachers. I have to say, this year, the vibe of the teachers was amazing. They really enjoyed and loved and took heart in helping each other out. The last day of ESY afterwards, a bunch of teachers were just standing around, still talking, and like thinking about what they were going to do next, or planning time to get together. So it ended up being a really cohesive group, and it was really fun to watch as we went through the summer. So the student services that were provided. Again, our ESY is for pre-K all the way to 12th grade, and including our students that reached to 21. We had a couple that did some community services that we provided support. Our LEAP program, which is our applied behavior analysis-supported program, along with our STRIVE program, which works on the behavioral and emotional goals of some students. We had, I was there as the board-certified behavior analyst to help out when need be with students with behavioral challenges or needed some additional support to the team. Our occupation on physical therapy, we had our speech and language therapist, we had a tenured speech for students that required just that to come in and get that service. Structured literacy was both embedded, as well as given one-to-one for one student. I think you would talk more about that, too. And then we had our paraprofessional support, our behavior specialists that have additional training in some areas to help with our students in our ABA programs. We also have Camp Sunrise. So for our higher, our older kids that are nine through 12, the opportunity to go to Camp Sunrise, which is where they work more on the social aspects of being out in the community and all those social... And then we had our para-professional support, our behavior specialists that have additional training in some areas to help with our students in our A B A programs. We also have Camp Sunrise, so for our higher, our older kids that are nine through twelve, the opportunity to go to Camp Sunrise, which is where they work more on the social aspects of being out in the community and all those social pieces that they need, or they can come to E S Y and do more of that academic curriculum based on what their needs and the I E P goal says that they need to do. We have special education teachers that were staffed this summer, and then our teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing came to support one of our students and the team that collaborated and worked with her.
Yes. So this year, I think one of the things that made our program as strong as it was, was the return of so many teachers from the years prior. We had teachers from all of our special services departments, our speech and language pathologists, our behavior analysts, but we also had teachers that have now been returning over three and four years, including our special education teachers. Our former Teacher of the Year was able to support our preschool program, and it was really that cohesiveness that made this year run so smoothly. I just wanted to highlight that our LEAP and STRIVE program was supported by teachers that are currently in district and those teachers that have been returning over three years. And this is a program that supports over forty students through the course of the summer, and for these teachers to come back year after year and support our students really provides that fluidity, provides that structure, and provides that continuous learning uninterrupted. We did, we were able to provide structured literacy. This is a scientific-based program for reading that we use for many of our students with reading disabilities and dyslexia, and those programs were able to continuously be provided uninterrupted by our students, for our students, through our special education service delivery because those teachers that did return were able to very fluidly provide that reading service within, embedded within the classroom. Our paraeducator and behavior specialist support systems are outstanding. We have very strong committed paraeducators and behavior specialists that really have very strong relationships with our students. And again, with them returning, we are able to seamlessly continue that relationship and that connection and focus on instruction as opposed to trying to rebuild relationships with new people. So, you know, we are very grateful that year after year, summer after summer, our, there's a group of staff that are willing to return every single year, and it makes for a very positive experience. I can't leave this slide without thanking the custodial staff. As they're trying to prepare for the new school year, we have overtaken Webb Elementary. And when I say overtaken, we are on the playground, we are in the gym, we are in the cafeteria, we are in the auditorium, we are in every single lower-level classroom, we are in the preschool, we are in the P T, speech, you name it, E S Y is there, and we are very grateful that they are there to, you know, kind of pick up after us, set the stage for the next day, help us out when something's not going quite right, and yet still have time to prepare for the new school year. So the custodial staff was just amazing again this summer.
So our student participation. So this year, students recommended were one hundred and thirty-four, and then the students that participated was one hundred and fifteen students. The students that declined coming was at a fourteen percent, and those that participated came to an eighty-five, point eight percent. If you look at these numbers from last year, last year's numbers, we had one hundred and thirty-four recommended and one hundred and seventeen that participated. So we are just two down from last year, making our percentages a thirteen percent decline and an eighty-seven percent participation. So we look, it seems very much the same as it was, like, we're very right there with the numbers from last year. The great thing is, is that the students that come back again, you can see when they come in, they do really love it. And a lot of students this year, we, I would say there was multiple students on the last day were sad to know that it was all over. And so that, that just, it brings such happiness to my face to know as I'm saying goodbye to students that they're like, what, it's over, it's all done, it went fast. And, and so that's just like a piece that I take with me. For the students that declined, some of them, the reasons why is, it's depending on the family. Some want, you know, there's vacations or they have things that are set already in stone, or they're going to visit family overseas that they've had set. Some parents just really feel that their students worked so hard and really just need that time to be able to kind of take a break from schooling. And then some parents actually prefer to say, I'd rather just be able to kind of provide the additional support or maintain or do my own kind of work with them during the summer, again, giving them that break. So those are kind of some of the reasons why our parents decide to decline for the most part. But as you can see, as our participation, how many come, we're about right at the eighty-five, eighty-six percentage, which is where we were last year. So it seems the same. And it's just, it's, it's just by coincidence that the one hundred and thirty-four number is the same from last year and this year, even though some students made tremendous progress that didn't have, didn't get recommended to come back, as other students had come in, it just seems to be that number. So it's not all the same students that came back from last year, it's just different students, but the number seems to be the same. So our students served. So as you can see on this graph that I have here, this is overall how many students we have. So again, we had one hundred and fifteen participate, and as you can see, our P K, our preschool, we had eleven, our preschool LEAP, we had around thirteen, fourteen. And our preschool LEAP is our third and fourth A B A program students. And then our kindergarten to sixth grade LEAP, again, is another pretty significant class size, which is up to about twenty-one. Our STRIVE program had four individuals that were there, and one of those actually participated in Camp Sunrise because he needed more of the social, emotional piece of collaborating with the community, which is great to see they were able to support him there. Our K through six, which is our overall biggest elementary school, is where a lot of those needs and deficits are being looked at, was at forty. And then our secondary was around eight, and then our Camp Sunrise, we had ten go this year of our older kids going, be able to take advantage of Camp Sunrise and the social benefits that come from there with support from some of our staff. For structured literacy that Liz had mentioned, we had about thirty-three students that participated in that in the embedded program. And then our speech itinerant, we had six students that participated in that. That's our overall, what our class looked like for this year. So continuing community connections, our partnerships that we had. We partnershiped with Weathersfield Public Library again. They, they came to us the year before, and I called them right up as I was getting ready to get things ready for this year, and she had said she wanted to come back. We had Neela, the therapy dog that came last year, she came twice this year because it was such a hit. And it's just amazing to see how the students get to participate, pet the dog, talk with the dog, and they actually were able to get a little card that gave you information about the dog as well. And it's kind of our celebration at the end of the year. And then we did have a partnership with Goodwill Industries where we had students, two students that were set up to go and work during the summer, actually all summer, for four hours a day with one of our para-professionals to help them continue what they've been doing for the school year. So that was really exciting to see them being able to go and do some internship work throughout the summer. Our goal for next year is to be able with our secondary-level kids to come up with a community project to try to tie in a little bit more with some needs of the community, and so that, and then tie in with our I E P goals. So the goal will be to look at across the board, the secondary I E P kids are working on, and see how we can connect that with some community to provide some projects for them to do. So as I had said, that we connected with the Weathersfield Public School, what happened was, is they were doing their Read Beyond the Beaten Path as their reading program. And so we were able to have Ellen Harzuski? Perfect. She came in the first week this year to be able to help all our students that were struggling to get set up onto the website for the library and be able to start logging in their reading. So she did that the first week, and what that happened is, is that allowed all the students throughout the week with the teachers to be able to go in and log in the books that they are reading. And with that, we were able to then give them out Brag Tags every single week for reading, and they loved it when I came by with a little Brag Tag that they got to say that they were reading. And so it was just really amazing to see, even the older kids that I didn't know if they would really care, they had their chain and they would have their Brag Tag and were excited to get another one for reading for that week. And so that was really exciting. And again, at the end, we celebrated it with, they were given popsicles, and we ended up being able to see the dog and just had a great celebration of all the reading that they had done. And with that, they were able to then go home and continue to log on and log into the books they were reading for the whole summer. And then we did have Nala visit that I mentioned before, and these are pictures again from this year with the students being able to see her and work with our reading dog and the her specialist. And again, it is amazing to see some of these kids just open up, just talk about being with dogs, hearing the stories, being able to read with her, and just, just taking that moment of a nice little break, they all get very excited. And so it was a great learning experience. And again, this year, they all got a card that talked about facts, fun facts about Nala that they got to go home and give to their parents and talk more about it.
So as we mentioned through the program, you know, our teachers mentioned how the program ran seamlessly. This was one of the best summers yet, one of our teachers mentioned, who continuously returns. Parents, such an improvement from last year's experience. We had some changes to our arrival and dismissal procedures that just made it run much more efficiently, being able to get students in within, you know, six to eight minutes, being able to get students on the bus in the same amount of time so that we could really maximize learning time. One parent mentioned the kindergarten and E S Y program was such a success for him. And this is not only through interview, through daily phone calls with parents, through exchanges, but also feedback through emails and Parent Square messaging. He had an excellent experience. And, you know, really, what, what rings true to us is when a little kid runs by and it's fun coming to school, right? When they're getting off the bus, and that's the comment they make. So, you know, making summer a fun experience for them. Of course, our achievement continues to be an area of focus. Our students during E S Y were able to maintain their skills, which is what we look for. Many of them were able to master objectives over the summer, which is also one of our indicators of success, assuring that all of our students can meet with success, meeting their I E P goals and objectives, and maintaining those skills so that they're prepared and ready for the new school year. I'd like to, you know, answer any questions that you may have regarding the program.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work, making it go smoothly.
Oh, it's our pleasure.
So one question. With the new law around age twenty-two, age-out changing, did that affect any, any of the students that we had over the summer?
So interestingly, nobody's birthday fell within that window. But it will impact next year, extending services through their twenty-third birthday, so the year of twenty-two, their full year of twenty-two. And we will plan on that. That's, you know, some of our reflection in looking to provide supportive programs through internship, meeting goals and objectives through work experiences, assuring that each student has an individual experience through summer school, through E S Y.
Thank you. Any other Board members with comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Healy.
Great presentation, great work. It's fantastic, a lot to be proud of. I had a quick question, just because I don't understand the math. I never, I should have probably gone to summer school to get my math to a point where I can use it somehow. When you talked about the total class, one hundred and thirty-four, is that a, are you authorized to go to a certain number, or is it just as they come in, you'll just keep going, correct?
So each individual is recommended. We have no cutoff, there's no, we can only have so many students. We prepare programming based on the recommendations of the teams.
So the decline is that they, these folks were accepted and then had second thoughts and decided to not participate? Is that what the decline means?
Yeah, so the P P T, no, no, the P P T recommended that the student attend summer school and the parent declined that service provision.
Okay, so, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Ms. Granato.
I'm glad we brought up the decline. I had brought that up last time you did a presentation, and I did not mean to, you know, bother anybody's family plans for the summer or parents, but that's exactly what you came back and said, exactly what you said in your presentation, that families have other plans, and sometimes even parents would like to work with their child. So thank you for putting that in there. Also, thank you for doing this presentation, and thank you for doing this program. And I'm thrilled to hear that teachers were signing up for it and excited about it, because that is their summer.
Yes.
So thank you for all of it.
Well, thank you again, and we appreciate the time.
Mr. Cassio.
I'm sorry, Ms.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. First of all, thank you, it's great. And the nice thing about this is that the environment is relaxed. There's structure, but it's a relaxed environment. So those children that may have, have become very shy or afraid to be, you know, aggressive, so to speak, they're getting their feet on the ground. And I think this is, the program certainly mastered, I believe, not only their skill of learning, but some of their emotional growth as well. So thank you. And thank you to the faculty for doing it.
Any other Board members? Dr. Vigan Laffey.
Thank you very much for this. Great job. Question and a comment. Question, is there a specific sort of, are students selected for being English-language learners, independent of other learning issues?
So this program is provided to students with I E Ps that are identified as students with special education needs. That's regardless of their L status, although they may also be receiving L services.
Okay. But L status in itself does not qualify someone for the program? Okay. I love the presentation. Perhaps I'm being overly sensitive, but I wonder, before this passes into minutes and is available on the website, I think I'd prefer, I feel more comfortable if we couldn't identify the students in the pictures. I don't know if that's a privacy concern for anyone else.
I'm assuming they have waivers signed, that they can have their picture?
Any student that's present in the photos would have had the waiver from their school year.
Great. Excellent. I love seeing their smiling faces, but just considerable privacy.
Anyone else? Mr. Riley.
Thank you so much for all of your hard work in, you know, in the summer program. I have two children who are at Camp Sunrise, and for those, I'll give just a little background. It's, you know, it's a camp open for special needs for folks in, in Weathersfield, Rocky Hill, and Glastonbury. You know, so we've had someone attending there probably for ten years coming from Rocky Hill to here. So it's a, it's a great program. Maybe you could see if they could run it a couple weeks longer. But, but I, you know, I don't know where, where my two kids would go if that camp was not available. And also so folks know that, you know, siblings can, can also, you know, be in, in the camp. Obviously, they're not under this program, but they can come. So that's, you know, very helpful, and, you know, when you've got someone with special needs, they can have a sibling there. So, you know, that's, that's very helpful. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Emmett, the 2023 Continuing Learning Across Summer Session presentation.
Yes, we've got our teacher leaders, along with Mrs. Stolli, who will come forward and provide a presentation on all of our class offerings.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, that's a tough act to follow. But we're here to talk about class, a continuing learning across summer session. I was reflecting back four years ago in the middle of the pandemic when we were primarily remote, and this was kind of a, an idea that happened late in May, which is really late to start. We actually start in January, February, just also start planning class, and decided to start an online summer school program. I remember there were some online cooking classes. I was like, how are they doing online cooking and math and all those crazy things during the pandemic? Fast forward four years later, we have a very different program, and I think that's what I'm so excited about and grateful to our teacher leaders. Stephanie McKenna, who was the class coordinator for the secondary level, and Shannon Brown, who was the class coordinator for K eight. I'm grateful for their leadership and the different coordinators we've had over the years that have really brought innovative ideas to this program, and it's grown and stretched in ways that I couldn't even imagine. So I'm grateful to work with such great teacher leaders and opportunity to kind of guide them, but they do all the work and bring forward great ideas. So my thank you goes to them, and I'm going to turn it over to them to do, talk about
Thank you, Sally. So, yeah, goals of the class, K eight program, as Sally said, it kind of evolved over the last couple of years, and I was happy to come in this last couple of years, and I was happy to come in this year as a new coordinator. So it was really to provide our kindergarten through K eight students an opportunity to continue their academic and social emotional learning through a wide variety of fun and engaging opportunities. I will emphasize that wide variety, which we had this year, and over about 23 teachers who stepped up to teach something of their interests, which was really great. We also provided transition activities for incoming kindergarten students and their caregivers and incoming seventh grade students to S D M S, which is happening this week. So hopefully these pictures try to provide some, a glimpse into just, you know, that academic as well as social emotional learning that went on during class.
And for our nine through 12 program, we had in-person credit recovery. This year, we offered four classes, English, science, math, and E L L, with a focus on reading skills for the science classes. Online edgenuity credit recovery courses, we had dozens of those. Elective skill booster courses, which were non-credit. We had the very popular transition to W H S class, which keeps growing and growing every year, and online edgenuity S A T prep courses. So really, this, this program for, at the high school level, it's an opportunity for students to continue their academic and social growth through targeted instruction.
Sure. Why continue class? You know, this touches on the summer slide as well, and there's always support for unfinished learning due to the pandemic and also just the interrupted schooling we have the past couple of years. And research supports that targeted academic support coupled with opportunities to engage creatively over summer months could drastically improve students readiness to return to school in the fall. I know Emily Carivella, one of our class instructors, the past couple of years, has noted she can point out students who have attended a class course in her courses. So it does make that impact. And research tells us that supporting student transitions to their new or next school helps improve their student success and ease the stress for families, as I'm sure we're going to hear this week from our students transitioning to middle school. Okay. So the K eight model this year in particular was offered in person solely between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, the month of July, as well as transition to S D M S happening 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. this week, August 21st. So this year kind of posed a challenge. We heard back from families that really liked their students or their children to attend more than one session. So we tried to stagger some of the courses about 15 minutes apart so students could stay back to back. We provided activities in the cafeteria for those who kind of had a longer stretch of time. I know Mr. Emmett took advantage of that, playing a really great game of trouble, I believe. It was documented. And so we have that. And just so they could stay, you know, parents could have that time to themselves and know that their child was learning, engaging, and being taken care of. So I will just kind of say, this year, we were able to offer the largest variety of courses. So I just want to read these individually because it points out to how many teachers were involved, but also some did up to three of these courses over the course of July. So we, of course, had transition to kindergarten, transition to S D M S, hip hop and jazz dance, right? Just saying that, I would want to attend. Writing creatively, mindfulness and yoga, beaded jewelry, word wizards, multicultural books and crafts, math games, wild about reading, fun with phonics, art and music connection, summer science crafts, which was led by our future educators, which we'll talk about in a minute, fairy tales from around the world, also led by our future educators, books and movies club, mad scientist, pop art, introduction to Italian, which ended with a pasta making class, which was really cool. Introduction to Spanish, crystal creations, Legos and coding, soap making, candle making, steam challenge, ukulele club, strings, American Sign Language, and writing creatively. So here's class in action. I'm not going to say much. I think the pictures say enough and really why we did it. The smiles kind of say everything. And you can see our instructors got right in there doing downward dog and all the good stuff. So yes, the top center is where they're making pasta live in a classroom, which is pretty exciting. And so this year, we were able to have our future educators, students who are identified in high school who wanting to go into teaching, some have just graduated from W H S. And so two of them, including Ms. McKenna's daughter, led fairy tales from around the world, where students read and acted, performed a fairy tale, and also summer science crafts, which directly correlate to some of the curriculum they'll be seeing or have already seen in our curriculum.
So I'll jump in for the nine through 12 model, but I'll digress a little bit. I, the middle school classes were held at the high school, and it was, the, these middle schoolers were so excited to be at the high school and participating, and it was just really, really awesome to see, to have those kids up there. And, you know, my, my daughter was on the future educators, and they went through the whole process of applying for this job on frontline, being interviewed, just going through the whole, getting recommendations, everything. And it was really, it was a really great process. And Shannon and Sally were just such wonderful support. So I just had to throw that in there as a parent of a future educator who I just dropped off at college on Saturday to start her teaching education. But anyway, back to the nine through 12 model. We had the very popular in-person transition to W H S course for incoming students, one session per student, two hours per session. We were able to offer eight different sessions in the month of July, because that was something that parents wanted. We wanted more sessions. And Mrs. Freel, who was our special education teacher and department liaison, she also gave some individualized sessions to, to students who have, who need a little extra support. So that was a big help. So she was able to do that. We were able to offer four different credit recovery courses this summer, which is the most we've ever offered. We had English, science, math, and E L L. And it was Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. during the month of July. So it's a lot. It's a big four-hour block of that one, one course. And for edgenuity credit, this was our online courses that students completed at home, or they could come into the building, English, math, science, social studies, P E and health. And we had lab support open. We had the lab open with a teacher there, a math teacher or a special education teacher there, where students could come in and complete their work. And we had, we had one student who was coming in so often, he, I'll tell you about the field trips in a little bit, he actually wanted to participate in the field trip. So he, you know, saw how much fun we were having. And then we have online edgenuity S A T prep course, which was completed at home, math, reading, writing, and language that students could sign up for. Here, I did a little kind of dive into some of the data. So I wanted to share this with you. Let me make it a little bit bigger, maybe. I'm sorry. So just looking at the last couple, last couple of years, we've run the high school program 2021, 22, and 23. Our in-person credit recovery, we had 21 students our first year, 19 students last year, and 17 students this year. Our first year, when we were completely masked that summer, we only offered one course. That was English. Last year, we were able to offer three courses, and this year, four courses. So we offered four courses of in-person credit recovery, and all students who participated in it, earned their credit. We did have a couple of students drop out early on for personal reasons, but those who participated in it fully earned their credit. We even had one student who started edgenuity and said, this is not working, and decided to come in to complete their class in person, which was very exciting, for me at least. For edgenuity credit recovery, again, not as many students complete it at home. They could come in the building, but, you know, it's 52% earned their credit. Our first year, last year, only 28%, and this year, only 54% earned their credit this summer for the online program. And then our first year, 39 students did end up completing their credit during the school year. Last year, only five did, and we can't determine that right now. But students who did not complete their edgenuity course this summer do have the opportunity to finish it once the school year starts. And we actually have a, a lab available in their schedule if they want to do that. Two years ago, we had three students earn their diplomas through our summer program. Last year, we didn't have any. And then this summer, we also had three students earn their diplomas as well. We had 94 students enroll in the S A T course two years ago, 14 last year, 22 this year. Transition to W H S just keeps getting bigger and bigger because it's very popular, so we just want to offer more to them. We had 70, we almost doubled it to 133, and then this year, we had 176. And for our credit courses, besides transition to W H S, we do ask for a $50 fee, just to, you know, have student have, little families have a little bit of investment. But we say, if you have financial need, please let us know, and we will cover that cost. And as you see, we had over 70% each year who needed financial assistance to cover that cost, that $50 cost. So that's just something to keep in mind. I know other school districts offer programs which are hundreds and hundreds of dollars, but it's, $50 can, can be a lot for families. Let's see. We did some enrichment, some S E L, some field trips. We got to work with the community. Our science teacher, Mr. Chatfield, set up a little, we took a walk down to Winter Green Woods, and then we took a walk down to the Eleanor Buckwulf Nature Center, and they got to play with the animals and absolutely loved it. I mean, it was like they're five years old all over again. We were able to have the Shakespeareance group come in, and the kids did a mythology workshop. They actually got up on the stage in the auditorium, did a little bit of acting. And Weathersfield Public Library, great resource in our community. We took a field trip there, and they got a tour of it. They were able to take out books. We had a group come in from the Connecticut Science Center to do a little DNA testing for their taste buds, and they got to bring home a little vial of their spit, and that was very exciting. We tie-dyed shirts at the end, the end of the week, and then we all wore them on the last day. We had a breakfast at the halfway point. We had an end-of-class luncheon, which is very popular. We have pizza and cupcakes, and it's just, yeah, it's a blast. And, and daily snacks provided by our wonderful cafeteria staff. They, they ordered some for us. We, there's some positive messages that they wrote. There's the kids tie-dying. And yeah, we had, we had a great, we had a great program. For the little S E L and enrichment, it was really just supposed, you know, English class is going to do this, science class will do this. And then all the kids kind of got jealous of each other, said, okay, everybody can do all of it. So we, we all did it together because, you know, we all got along and they all got something out of it. So even if they were taking a math credit recovery, they went to Shakespeareance and loved it. So we had, we had a great group, we had a great, great time this summer, and I'm really, really proud of them. But as you see, K through eight, 530 students with a lot of registrations, right?
Yeah, this was individual students, so shout out to Jeff Telke, who helped me with the spreadsheet, the magic spreadsheet. I remember one day, so I had the number of registrations, which you can see is very high, and I said, I want to know how many students are we reaching? And so he did his magic, and I think it was 498, and I said, I want 500. And this was like June, you know, and I was like, we're, we're going to the, well, we went over. So that's exciting. So these are individual students, because many of them took multiple courses throughout the summer.
Communications with families at the high school level. We use Parent Square email, phone calls, the class website, which Shannon and I worked on and were able to put onto our W P S website. And it was very helpful to families. Emails, phone calls home, answering phone calls and emails. For W H S, the families get weekly progress reports through edgenuity, and I would call home, let the parents know kind of where, where the kids were, and feedback survey from parents and guardians, which that actually, that's helped us every year in planning the next year's program. So that's always been very, very helpful. And family survey for K through eight?
Sure. So I was able to send out a survey towards the end of summer. As you can see, with very positive ratings. I've given a lot of surveys over my career, and this is probably the most positive, so, which is great to see. So 94% of families agreed or strongly agree that the goals of class were met. 97% of families agreed that the experience was positive and engaging, as we heard tonight. We'd love to have Fiona and Felix, you know, involved in something like this in the future. 91% of families found the mini-course offerings varied, or something that their child was interested in. We did run into a couple of students that, I'm just here because my mom signed me up. We, I promise they still had fun. They looked with smiles. So 94 families would recommend class to W P S families, and 94% would enroll their child if class was offered again. So some of the comments that were made were from these families. They said, you know, what did you find to be the most valuable aspect of class? And the opportunity to participate in class offerings different from what is offered during the school year? Truthfully, these classes have been the highlight of my children's summer for the last two years, which is great. As you saw, the variety of those courses are not things we can offer necessarily day to day, but we were able to touch on during the summer. They were able to continue social skills and engaging in new topics with teachers and peers from across town. My children absolutely love learning during the past few weeks and look forward to each and every day. I thought it was interesting, it was held at Emerson, which was a new school for me, and we had kids as young as first grade coming in. They may not know anyone in their course, and they really had to tap into those social skills to kind of make friends during their, during their week and maybe meet a new teacher they'd never seen before. So it was really neat to see them grow. What, again, continuing that question, what's the most valuable? The teachers, they kept my children fully engaged. My seven-year-old said it was more fun than our vacation. That's pretty high praise. I don't know where they went on vacation exactly, but that's pretty high praise. So also, there's lots of different options. Liked how they offered the kids stay at the school between shorter morning classes, so parents enough to come pick up their child between the 15 and 20 minutes and then drop them back off. That was actually specifically designed that way this year, so we'd hope to continue that if possible.
And some of the results, we had 176 students participate in the transition to W H S course. We're able to increase that number because Ms. Lindsay came on, she's one of our school counselors. She and Mr. Carr were able to kind of tackle all those numbers to, to bring kids around the building at the high school and make them feel more comfortable. And from the parent feedback last year, they wanted more information from school counselors. That's why we brought a school counselor on. Again, 106 more students than the 70 who participated in our first session in 2021. So that's exciting. We had 22 students participate in edgenuity S A T prep, and 17 students earned credit through the in-person credit recovery courses, thanks to an amazing team we had at the high school. We had English with Ms. Fortuna, from the middle school, science with Mr. Chatfield, who's at the high school, math with Mr. Nye, who's also at the middle school, and E L L with Mrs. Burlow, who is at the high school. And again, parent feedback last year requesting additional in-person summer courses, and we were able to offer four this year, increased from last year. We had 36 students participate in the online edgenuity credit recovery courses. We had 15 different courses or subjects taken by the students. 19 students recovered more than 23 credits this summer. So we're seeing that a couple of students earned more than one credit, which was exciting. Three students earned their diploma through edgenuity. We had the computer lab open with Mrs. Bonfiglio and Mr. Miller, who are both teachers at the high school. And we had 21 students who did not fully complete their summer edgenuity courses. They're partially done. They can, we hit the pause button on it, and they can continue it this school year. We have a lab class that's run by Mr. Kokomo, and they can register for that and finish, finish it this school year and earn that credit. Some of the feedback, 83 to 80% of families agree or strongly agree the goals of class were met, experience was positive engagement, engaging, and would recommend it. And we got some feedback from families that pleased on it at some point. But really, the opportunity to earn credits, transition to W H S, again, is popular, and it makes the kids feel way more comfortable, which, which is nice to see. And the communication, okay, because we're all about communication, so families know what's going on and the kids do. Families were happy with the program. And then we have a pretty detailed one about, staff was available. You know, we were there to answer any questions from the kids, from the families, and there was some flexibility with in-person or online availability. Feedback from our class teachers, who are absolutely amazing, very helpful in helping students catch up on credit so they can graduate with their peers. You know, that's something we really want to focus on at the high school level. At minimum, edgenuity classes should be offered for students to get their credit back, offers opportunities for students to re-engage in their education. They have very small classes and doing those little field trips and S E L type activities. We just really have a bonding experience. And from years past, those kids who participate in the program, they come and visit the summer school teachers throughout the school year. You know, we have this connection, and we're always kind of, make sure you get your credits, let's get, make this happening. And it was a meaningful experience for select at-risk students, 100%. Students benefited from building positive relationships with teachers and the W H S staff. So I, I completely agree with that. Feedback from our W H S class students, it was fun, they enjoyed the activities, they thought the teachers were good, helpful understanding, no complaints. And they got the help they needed because they were such small, focused classes. And there was some self-reflection, you know, I need to procrastinate less, which I do too sometimes. Coming in person helps you not to procrastinate. So these students So these students knew, I need to come in the building, it's, it's going to help me, that's going to be the best bet for me. And students felt more prepared. We had a lot of students who were juniors entering their senior year, who were really nervous about credit recovery, and they did the right thing, they came in, and most of them are up to speed down. They, they have everything they need, and they just need their credits for this school year, so they don't, they're not worried about graduation. And just having summer school in person, they, they really appreciate that. And, Sally, is that you?
So lots of people on this list around thank-yous. I think we've taught, talked about quite a few of them, but again, like ESY, it really does take a lot of people to bring all this together in the month of July. July was hopping multiple schools with ESY in class going on. So looking ahead, as you know, the last four years, we've used our per funds to fund class as one of the many strategies to remediate interrupted learning during the pandemic. Future class programming will need to be supported through the operating budget because this was our last grant-funded class that we have. So somebody look ahead, I hate to be the bearer of bad news after such a great presentation, but that's the reality I wanted to bring forward. And then, as you've heard through both of our presentations this evening, all this work, you've heard examples of our students becoming greater communicators, problem solvers, and collaborators. So all this work furthers our student vision of the graduate to ensure our students are equipped with those skills and aptitudes as they walk across that stage at the code for Weatherfield graduation. So you can see why I'm so grateful for these wonderful leaders and amazing job they did. Do you have any questions for us?
Thank you, Ms. Stoli, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Brown, great presentation, good job. I definitely appreciate that. We're listening to the feedback we got, and it improved upon it each year, so that was great to see. Mr. Cassio.
Thank you, Sally. Thank you for coordinating and being part of this great team. You know, it's, you can tell everyone really enjoys what they're doing in both programs, in all the programs. So the energy is there, and you can tell by the engagement of the students. Small groups, okay, you know, and it's not only summer school, but it's during the school year that the teachers are telling the kids, you need to come, you need to be there. So the communication seems to be there, and it is. You know, and it's a great program, but as, as you ended it, it kind of made the hair on my neck stand up. Because this is what our board has been discussing during this entire budget season, how these funds are going to end, and they are ending. And that's why, Stephanie, you mentioned districts are charging hundreds of dollars for this course. So now that the grant is ended, we have no money in the school budget, none. The budget was reduced. So now, this is a program that is going to be severely impacted next year. Get ready, community.
Mr. Lakhavali.
I echo some of John's concerns. I think we need to find a way to fund programs like this. It's obvious that there's great things going on in the schools year-round, between class and between the ESY program. We just need to figure it out, right? One question, do students get to pick and choose from those cool courses, or do they get to experience all of them?
At the K eight level, they pick and choose, so different courses. What we've learned when we first started this is really, our teacher resources are limited supply. So really, we ask our teachers, when are you available to work? All four weeks, one week, two weeks, how many classes? And kind of work backwards. And so again, we try to logically arrange them where kids can take multiple classes, but it's a sign-up, and some of them actually close like on the first day. Some of them close very quickly. And then Shannon did a great job trying to recruit other people to take additional classes so they could run. So yes, and so, again, some parents choose for their children, but students are often usually involved in the process of what they want to learn.
Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Regan LaFevre.
Yeah, I kind of jumped the gun on this one, I was just so enthusiastic about class. My kids had a really great time. My only, my only suggestion would be to, to get those options out there even earlier because we would have made other camp plans around this because it was that good. And it also, you know, most parents work, most parents work in the summer, and to be able to have a longer morning is huge. And also, to be able to have a week or two of free childcare for that time is also huge because many parents are spending thousands on camps every summer, and it's really tough. And, you know, you see that from the high school, you know, where the, the $50 fee is a big one. So I also, it won't be my decision, but I really hope that in, in next year's budget, there will be a way to, to keep funding this program because it's really, really valuable.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, just one quick one.
Yes, Mr. Yerley.
So, so what has been the cost of this all-in? Is there a number on that? I can't remember.
For the class program, it was $80,000 this year.
That covered both the K through eight and the secondary?
Yep.
Okay. How much, 240, that, what did you say? 80,000?
80,000.
Thank you. I do want to clarify for the board, the ESY program, that is a separate program that is not grant-funded, that is an obligation that the district has and has had for years. So that is contained within the operating budget, but the class, the enrichment, what you just saw with this presentation, has been solely grant-funded.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank, I just wanted to say thank you, thank you. That was fabulous.
Great job, guys.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give it a minute for the projector to go up. At least they finally fixed the light bulb. All right, moving on to meetings held, Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Mr. Riley, would you like to share a brief update since Ms. Drew is absent tonight?
Sure. For the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023, we are $46,000 under budget. The last, that budget included $100,000 for desktop computers and $30,000 for musical instruments. For the, for the upcoming fiscal year, there's a few things that, that we're looking at, outplacements, and then there are substitute teachers, magnet tuition, and, you know, there's also been a slight salary reduction in, in full-time teachers. So there will be more data available in September as things move along, and that's my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Meeting scheduled, we have the Weatherford Early Childhood Collaborative, WEC, 9/11/23 at 4:30 PM, Career Council, 9/20/23 at 11:30 AM, and a Finance and Operations Committee meeting on 9/26/2023 at 6:00 PM. There's no unfinished business, public comment. Anyone in the public wishing to make comment, please come to the podium, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
Sorry, just one last time, Brian Jin, 21, Adam Blaine, also with my wife, Leanne. I realize that during our last public comment, we didn't take any questions or answers from the board, didn't want to hold up the time, but if anybody, any questions or follow-ups in regards to our application for our daughter to enroll in kindergarten, it would be hammer.
Just so you're aware, the board does not interact during public comment?
Oh, sorry.
So that's why, no, just wanted to make it clear.
Yeah, I got it. I understand also, I know we, we don't engage in this, but last name is Cassie Santa? Okay. Not Leanne Cassie Santa? Okay, because I know you, you called the curriculum office, left a message, I called back and didn't hear from you. So I have your number on my desk, I'd be happy to reach out to you again tomorrow because I have some questions. Happy to do so, all right?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
May I ask a point of order?
Your call, point of order.
All right, I guess it's a point of information, perhaps. You know, obviously, we can't enter into back and forth, and this wasn't on the agenda, but the parents have raised something that's time-sensitive. I've, I have double-checked the statute that they're quoting, and it does say that boards of education-
Okay, point of order, we can't have this discussion.
No, so, so how-
We still can't have this discussion.
Would it be for a future scheduled meeting? Does it have to be a special meeting if this were something the board wanted to take up?
It'd be a special meeting.
A special meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other person wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Do we have a motion to move to executive session for the discussion purposes and possible approval of the Weatherfield Administration Association's contract?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.